It's now six thirty, September the eleventh of two thousand and twenty five. This is the City of Menneson. Council work session has taken place. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner?
Here.
Councilman Nester?
Present.
Councilperson Thomas? Councilwoman Chikowski? Mayor Mosher?
Present.
Mayor, we know three present and two absent, but no decorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Karen Martin to lead us in prayer.
She's with the Salvation Army.
Thank you for coming.
Hi, thank you so much. What an ironic day for me to be asked to come today because it's September eleventh. Twenty-four years ago, something sinister happened in America, right? It doesn't get any easier, right? And I love that we have it as we'll never forget. But before I pray, I'm just gonna ask that we have just a couple moments of silence for the families and then I'll just pray into it. Holy Father, we just thank you, Lord God, for this space that you have created, Lord, for the city of Menneson and in the area with all the leaders and our panel here, Lord God. We just ask your blessing here. Make this space holy ground. Lord God, we know that it's really hard to agree with everybody all the time, but Lord, I ask that your peace be here, Lord. And as they are doing their planning and they're discussing of the affairs of Menneson, Lord, I just ask that you be with them, be with their hearts, Lord. Let everything stand on your foundation because that's where the strength is. We thank you so much for this city, Lord God, and the strength that we have here. Lord, I ask Heavenly Father that your power be here. May your blessing and your protection be over this place even with the craziness of the world coming, Lord God. We just ask your protection and your blessing as we move forward from today onward, Lord. We thank you, Holy Father, for all who have come here in regards to the affairs, Lord. Bless us and bless this meeting today. We pray this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. I believe the Minister of Minister, today is the council. Could somebody make a motion to accept the minutes from the previous August twenty-eighth meeting?
Mayor motion to approve minutes of previous session of August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Yes. This time, I'd like to invite public comment on agenda items only directed to myself.
Ernest, telegraph us. Where are we with this visionary committee for the Mon Valley EMS?
I'll talk about that.
You're gonna tell us progress or you're gonna just tell us what your plan is?
Progress that we've seen thus far, yes.
Okay. What about the Supernova Services Director of Employment?
Yeah, we'll also discuss that as well.
But can you define what behavior issues are there?
We will talk about that at some.
You're gonna define that, okay.
That's what this whole purpose is, to discuss these items.
I know, but it doesn't give details. But anyway.
That's why we have a discussion process.
Well, you can go either way with it vague like that. The City of Menneson on behalf of the county, five demolitions. Can you tell us where is the money coming from? Land bank?
I believe those are CDBG.
They're CDBG.
Okay, now, if that's the case, does that cut into the thirty thousand?
This is twenty-one CDBG money, twenty-two-one CDB.
Oh, long ago.
Long ago, yes.
Yeah, I didn't know, again, it doesn't tell you anything. Okay, so, I guess Karen, I don't know, D and E. Why is there two sound contract? One's for fifteen hundred dollars and the other's fifteen hundred dollars. Why is there two different companies with two different sound and lights? And when Billy Price was playing, we didn't pay no fifteen hundred dollars for his lights in South?
Yes, we did.
Fifteen hundred?
Yes.
To which company?
The same show.
Okay, now, why is there two here?
The one's for the sound and one's for the performer.
What do you mean performer?
If you read it, one's for Big Shoe, which is the sound contractor. The other is for Sky Pilot, which is the entertainment.
So what are we paying sound for? Just to pick up the birds and the bees outside or what? Outside entertainment is the sound?
No, you have to have amplifiers and a sound system for the people to play with.
Okay, I don't know what we're getting involved here, but I appreciate your answers there, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? For the agenda, it's my turn to talk about some of the things that's been going on here. A couple of things that are not on the agenda that we're gonna discuss tonight. And I'm just primarily just bringing these up because they will be on the agenda for voting next time. And the only reason I'm doing this, just so that everybody understands that they get a chance to research it or whatever. One is, these are all USDA projects. One is change order four, which is a no-cost change order. And that's really for the contractor that has not been able to do anything because we've had delays in getting our CSX and our rightaways cleared out. So they're asking just to reset the clock for one year for that period. Costs us nothing and is very appropriate. Another one is a change order three A, which is for five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-four cents. This is interesting because this is the change order which will affect smaller pipe throughout the city, all the way up through the park plan, throughout the city, all over the place, wherever they have the smaller pipe that's needing repair. There's another one, change order number four, which will soon become change order five, probably by the time that this reaches the end of the month when we actually vote on it. But it's a reduction from four hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to something closer to seventy-five thousand dollars. And this is because they had some pipes that they found that didn't need repair. They were in good shape or they were too, they were all beyond anything that they had the ability to work with. So that'll save quite a bit of money. Amendment nine is for our WC engineering to provide the engineering specifications for change order eight, which is for, and the amendment nine is for a hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Change order eight is one million, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's gonna be what takes care of all the other lines that cross from Fifth Street, Third Street, and so forth, even Printy going across all the way to the river. Change order eight is gonna, needs to start in about January of twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-six. So it's rather interesting if you think about what this has got going on. MCSP is expected to arrive in town and begin lining the Printy line from Donner, cross the tracks and down through the easement obtained from West Worland Realty Company to the river. That's the, what's the name of the stadium, Muggie Hill of it? Gillian?
Gigliotti.
Gigliotti. That's gonna start happening pretty much within a few weeks this year. When they arrive, they're going to send a person down through the pipe from Third Street, from Fifth Street, underneath the mill and mark exactly where the manhole is that they know exists down there, but they don't know where it is on the surface. They're gonna go through there. When they get there, they're gonna carry a locator with them. They're gonna take a tape measure, push it up, and they'll figure out how deep it is from the bottom. They know how deep the pipe is. They'll figure out how deep they gotta dig to find it. This is a job I do not envy. You can never catch me going down a thirty-six inch line, crawling on my hands and knees for a half mile to get to this location. But there are people in this world that do that. And they will be doing that was one of the first tasks that they do. So the purpose of that is to identify where that comes up. Now, Cliffs is pretty significant insofar as they have good maps of their own. They're pretty convinced that this is gonna turn out to be in a particular parking lot space in the parking lot over across the tracks. They have a parking lot over there for their office building. And they think it's gonna turn out to be in that parking lot. So we gotta market, double-check that that's exactly where it is and how deep they gotta go. Now, I also met with Randy Sheldon of Cleveland Cliffs. And he indicated as long as we're working closely together, this is gonna go very smoothly. When I say working closely together, it means that all the contractors that are working over there have to go through a safety program. They're gonna, it's about a one-hour program. They're gonna be instructed on what they gotta do, what kind of equipment they gotta wear, where they can go, how they check in and so forth. When they're doing their job, they're gonna be given a particular boundaries. This is where you can be. You can be between this line and this line, this line and this line, a box. And this is where you park your trucks. This is where you're working from. You don't go outside that boundary. You go outside that boundary, your life is at risk. Because they have heavy equipment that's moving around all the time there. They don't have good visibility for some of this equipment. You'll get run over. It's just, you gotta be safe. You gotta do this right. You gotta do it according to their rules. And I feel confident that we can do those types of things.
What do you mean?
Are you gonna be involved with the duty?
I'm not doing the work.
You don't wanna fall into the danger of the same money?
I'm working with the attorneys to get the agreement, sir.
We're working on this all. This is a team effort. This is nothing that one person's doing. We're watching the dollars very carefully, making sure that everything's done very economically as best as possible. So it's gonna take about two to three months to do the Printy line. That's the first line that goes down, that crosses Gilliani's property that we have down there, that we have the right-of-way already lined out to do. When that time is up, we have to have all the easements in process in place with Cleveland Cliffs. I don't see any reason why this won't work, but we need to have those in process and we need to have them accomplished. We got about a three-month window at most to get all these accomplished. If we fail to do this, if they fail to reach an agreement, then we're gonna be forced to send these people that are working for this project somewhere else to do some other project. And it's gonna be detrimental to both us and Cliffs. They understand this. They're working diligently to have it done. There is about a one-to-two week period that they're gonna have to use to move some coal around where they know some of the other manholes exist. So there's a lot of very tight timing that takes place. We're gonna have to work very closely with Cleveland Cliffs, working very closely with Randy Sheldon. It will happen. We're both committed to making sure this does happen accordingly. Last but not least, we did receive a message, a letter from the RDA requesting clarification in exchange for a donation that they would like to make in return for mowing and taking care of their insurance plans. That will be something that we'll discuss, that will be on the agenda for a motion at the end of the month. Is there anything else anybody knows of that? I need a frame for it. Okay, so, next thing on the thing is what Ernest talked about, discussion of recent meetings with the visionary committee relative to Mon Valley EMS. First off, they've made a lot of improvements. I don't have any numbers from nine-one-one about how many more, what their percentage of coverage is, but I think that it's clear that they provided some documentation that looks like they're doing much better than they had done in the past. And Delmar's willing is able to jump in and correct me if I say anything that's incorrect. He was at that meeting. The bottom line is they've invested in some very important equipment such as a, what do you call that? Gurney that they got? A self-loading stretcher that when you have these people very overweight or whatever and they try to lift them into an ambulance and now they just pull it up to the ambulance, little hook grabs on it, lifts the wheels up and pulls it in the ambulance. It's much, much improved. And that little stretcher is a fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment, too. It's not the top of the line, but it is something that we need in Menneson. I think they said it's got up to about eight hundred pounds, is that right? Yeah. It's a very significant stretcher and it's a very significant improvement to the service that they can offer to Menneson. They are continuing to work forward. There are some things that they ask that we do such as look at possible things from possibly LSA or whatever that we might be able to do to help them move along. Those are things that we'll work through as we move down that train. So the next one is discussion about recent meetings with Dennis Marknick and some of the activities he's beginning to work with. And I'm gonna ask Mike to kind of explain this one a little bit, if you would.
We have scheduled meetings for next week on both the downtown development project and the stamp program. And those will be in place. We also have developed our database to go and reach out to businesses within a ten-mile radius of Menneson to begin the process of discussing how they might participate in the beginning efforts of coming to the city for development. He'll let me know tomorrow to confirm that. But that'll be happening next week to get that started and kicked off. And that is utilizing, you know, the funds that we have from the downtown development grant of seventy-five thousand and the stamp program. So we're looking forward to starting that and getting it kicked off and reporting to you at the meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Also, along the same lines, we also did meet with West Worland County Community Action. And that was something that they're working for presenting a, or managing a NPP, a network. What's the NPP? Network?
Neighborhood.
Neighborhoods.
Partnership Program.
There you go. Neighborhood Partnership Program. This is, this has nothing to do with the trailers. This is, what this is, is they have the ability to work with the state on people that owe fifty thousand dollars or more to the state and take that fifty thousand dollars invested in the community and receive a ninety-five percent tax credit from the state. So that only ends up costing a large company five percent to donate money to the city to protect projects. So what we, the purpose of the meeting was to determine what those projects would be. And we wanted to very much work with Dennis Marknick because he's our stamp coordinator and he's doing a project for developing what we have across the way here. The point being is it all fits together quite well and it needs to play together quite well. One of the things that's come up is our animal control and protective services within the city of Menneson. Chief, would you like to talk about that any at all?
We need to meet with the, we need to put like.
Take this to him.
Sir, I could, I could barely stand up. You're probably hearing me better than.
Well.
All right, we're gonna have to reach out either, I don't know if this is gonna have to be an RFP or if this has to be a meet with, call up XYZ, come down here, see what they have to offer and then go from there. That's where we're at. We're at a stagnant point right now.
So what we have now is not working?
It is not working.
Okay.
So I would recommend the city, if it is an RFP, to put out there for, you know, for this service or if it's just we call people up and they come down here and we interview them and go from there.
You can do both, right? Put out the RFP and reach out to people saying, hey, we're looking for these services.
Yeah.
We can't do an RFP, can't authorize one until we have council meetings, or whatever can we do that with requisition?
Now you got to talk about it with requisition. It would just be illegal and add in paper. You can use the requisition.
Okay. So we can perhaps, I would invite your officers that are particularly invested in this to get together with us and help us develop a plan to move forward with that then.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you. Yeah, it's good. Ernest Keith. One of the things that we did prior to this meeting was hold a public hearing related to the demolition of properties. And there was, I had it, six properties? Yeah, there you go. Six properties. We didn't have a lot of participation, but we went through all the proper procedures for clearing these for demolition. They will be on the agenda for approval by council. They include five oh nine South Fourteenth Street, six twenty-two Summit Avenue, six thirty Summit Avenue, six thirty-two Summit Avenue, nine sixteen to nine eighteen Summit Avenue, nine twenty Summit and nine twenty Summit Avenue. Those are the six properties. Two of those properties are burn properties and the rest are very blighted properties. They need to be gone. Let's talk about the predecessor Supernova Services. Why don't you explain this?
Supernova is a company that offers behavioral clientele to different entities, both in the public and private sector, to perform services such as light maintenance and cleaning at locations based upon a schedule determined by the municipality or the nonprofit or the profit company to use their services. They're a federally funded group that receive their funding in that manner and offer that to the municipality for free. If the municipality offers them the ability to utilize a place in the building where they're working, whether it be city hall, the city garage, civic center, police station, library, a place for their life coach to be centered and a lunch area for the workers. Under that cooperative agreement, they would do whatever we by contract ask them to do to supplement these services for free in our area. It's a great program. It offers a great service to these folks. It gives them the ability with their, you know, behavioral issues to work and develop skills that they may take into the workforce further and do that in a day-to-day basis determined by us, so. Yes, yes. So what they would like to do is have a session possibly at the next meeting to come in and make a presentation and talk about this. And then they supply solicitor a draft contract to begin the process to look at and work from there. So I think it sounds like something that would really work, be beneficial to the community and these folks with these issues, but it's supervised by them and paid for by them. And all we have to do is provide that. Anything else, Mayor?
No, that sounds good. Thank you. This is one of the things that we tried to put on several weeks ago where we had a public hearing on CDBG projects. And we got absolutely zero input from the public. Well, it's getting down to crunch time. And I wanna ask council to put together their list of things that they wanna do. And we will hold yet another public hearing for everybody. But I'd like to have council present their list to me prior to the next meeting.
When's the next meeting?
The twenty-fifth. So if you can get your list to me of all the things that you think you'd like to do with the CDBG money, we'll hold a public hearing probably the day of the next meeting, prior to the meeting. Probably at five o'clock on the same day. But at six-thirty, when we have our meeting, we need to be in a position to compile all those and put together our suggestions to go to the, for final presentation to the, for the, to DCED. They're not required to DCED for another thirty days. But you gotta have all the numbers, all the estimates, all the descriptions. It takes time to get all that together. So council just needs to be very aware. You got two weeks to get your ideas together and get them to me.
Are we gonna be given a list of examples? Because there's no point putting things down if they're not even qualified projects.
There's three hundred thousand dollars at stake here. So panic C, three hundred thousand dollars.
My opinion, I'd like to see most of that go to streets.
We can do up to seventy percent to streets. And that's fine. I have nothing against that. But there's other things that we need. We have fire department, as example, that has a generator that needs to be hooked up to fire station number two. On everybody's desk is a emergency operations plan. When EMS closed down all their operations, they shut down the control center that they had at EMS station. The only other location that might work would be Hilltop Fire Station.
My question is if you have a bad snowstorm like in oh nine, when you had to implement some type of center of that, that center you had to, it's gonna be a possible go-heel if it is to travel downtown.
Well, but by the same token, assume that this kamikaze airplane hit this tank over here. This downtown wouldn't exist.
That's true, too.
So we have nine-one-one in Greensburg. That is the primary emergency operations center. We, in the event that there's a major issue, we need to have a secondary one. And the suggestion is that Hilltop Fire Station has most of the equipment already in place. Need the generator hooked up and there's some other building issues that we need to take care of. We need to make sure that we have internet separate from standard internet and backup telephone communication.
The plumbing's been fixed there, correct?
I believe so, yes. That was due to some brilliant work that Delmar did. Well, we got salt trucks and we got, I mean, yeah, well, they're four-wheel driving.
Yeah, I mean, if they got the equipment and they just need a generator, let's see what they want them. I mean, as long as the building doesn't need any more repairs.
There are some building repairs that need to be done on that building. The host tower is separating from the building. It needs some repair. There's some money that we need to look at spending there. And that may be a CDBG project. It might be a future LSA project, but we're gonna have to address that at some point.
All right, I just don't wanna throw money at something that it sounds to me that the building might be condemned one day. We're already struggling to pay for streets. I don't know how we're gonna pay for a building we own.
Well, this is the way things go. Okay, well, we can talk about that more, too. The bottom line is think about your CDBG projects. Clearly, you want roads in there, but above and beyond the roads, there's still thirty percent, a hundred thousand dollars that can be spent on something else. It has to be LMI-related, but there you be. Okay. Next thing is the restoration work. PNG has come into town and done a lot of work on their gas lines. And the same's true with the water lines with ABC, but right now I'm talking about the gas line. What they do is they come in and they do the restoration, they dig up the lines, they do it. And we have curb-to-curb ordinances that have to be redone. We can hold their feet to the fire and say, you do this. But what they said is our restoration crew is very, very expensive. And the city seems to be able to do better. So they ask us, they give us the money and allow us to contract out the restoration work. And so far, we've actually done it cheaper than what the money is that they gave us, which gives us more money for repairing roads, other places. We sat down with PNG and we said, you know, we have this surplus. What do you want us to do with, what do you want us to do with that surplus? And they said, well. And they said, well, use it on other roads that, that, uh, they got a fair deal when we gave them the, the estimate, and we got a super deal and we got the bids. So we have, as a result of that, we have a fund that's set aside for other roads that currently has something approaching a hundred thousand dollars in it. So there's some of your roads you want to do, we need to start thinking about.
Oh yeah, I got quite a few.
Me too. Um. Okay. On the tables here is the emergency operations plan, as I already talked about that a little bit. That plan is pretty much, um, a rewrite of what took place years ago, but is, is better. It has all the current phone numbers in it and so forth. We need to be a little bit careful with it in that I will add some stuff to it related to Cleveland Cliffs. Cleveland Cliffs being the largest industrial customer we have in, in, in Menneson, has an emergency operations plan of their own. And I want to make sure that we have information in our plan that covers theirs, and they have information in their plan that covers ours. So that's about the only thing that's likely to change with that. Uh, I wish we had somebody from our treasury department here, and we need to get together with them. Um, I'll be very blank, blunt with everybody. Our garbage bill has been high. You can pay, you can pay, prepay that, pay it annually, and you get a little bit of a discount. You can pay it quarterly and you pay a very minor addition to it, to cover the additional four billings that you gotta take place due. But at the last of the minute, we did a monthly plan, and it was basically at face value, which became a disaster, to be honest with you. Getting twelve people come in twelve times a year to make their garbage payments has not been a success. The people are, first off, don't do it, and it's been a nightmare to the treasury department to keep track of it. And, um, unless there's some amazing thing that people come up with, I think that we need to, uh, think of a better plan than, than monthly. That just doesn't work. Either charge a premium for it or, or something to cover our cost in it. Does anybody have any suggestions or thoughts on that subject?
I just have one question. How did we ever get to the point where we pay the garbage bills? Cause I have friends who live in other cities, they pay it directly to the garbage company.
That's how like Monongahela does it.
Do you recall anybody's been around here long enough to know how we got into business of garbage collection?
It's been before my time, I couldn't tell you.
I think since, ever since the refuse authority was ever created, that's how we ended up becoming
Hmm.
The, the payment system. But like you have municipalities like Monongahela that just, you, they pay directly to the cur-
Right. Uh, Wayneburg, you pay directly, Clarksville, you pay directly, and I just wondered how we decided. How, since idea was to create an authority to take over the payments, it seems like it's a lot of work on our part.
I think at one time they thought it was cheaper to have two municipalities come together and have an authority to split the bills.
I think they were trying to do more than two at the time.
Yeah. They wanted to, yeah. So.
But that's neither here nor there. At one po- time, I believe that they were collecting more money than it was costing them. They were using it to offset some of their budget problems. Uh, as of recent, we're barely scraping by to the end of the year and covering the, the fee. In fact, last year we had to chip in some twenty thousand dollars. Um. My suggestion is we, we drop the, the monthly or we raise the monthly to the.
If no one's paying, I say just wipe it off.
Or, or add five or ten dollars per month to cover the overhead that we have with, with the billing process. It's a problem.
I'd say get rid of the monthly. We don't have anyone that's coming in and paying for it.
We do. We have a few.
But it, it, and then if, I mean, we-
Smaller number.
A small amount. Is that really offsetting the amount that's not coming in?
I would like for Treasury Department to be here and tell us that because they're the only ones that really know.
We have a quarterly paying it, right?
We pay monthly. The city pays monthly.
I don't know.
Well, think about that because we need to have a plan put together the next meeting that we all can work with, such that, uh, we can get started with the twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Garbage bills. We're getting that time of the year that we need to start thinking about that, taking care of that.
Right. So the payment options are yearly, monthly, and that's it?
And quarterly.
And quarterly.
I like yearly and quarterly myself.
That's what I was thinking. Just get rid of the monthly. I mean, those folks that are coming in monthly, they're gonna have to just set up aside a, a little kitty on their own, be responsible.
Right.
Right. I, I think that's the way to do it. And the quarterly can be the quarterly plus about five dollars for each bill, just to take care of the, the billing for that. Okay. Um, anybody else want to talk more about that? The next thing is, um, it's been requested that we put a stop sign on Spring Drive and Lee Drive to enhance the safety of the residents in the area. Um, I don't know who achieved with that. Is that? Well, what's your thought there?
All right. Um, my thought is, for some reason, people are using Spring Drive as a quote-unquote shortcut.
Which is a little bit of a short.
Which is, it makes no sense to me. I don't know. Ever since they did construction up there, am I correct? Like it's just been, you know, people using that.
So putting a stop sign will eliminate that thought that it's a shortcut?
That, or it will slow people down.
Which is both a good thing.
Yes. So if we could, uh, get an ordinance, uh, enacted or going here, uh, for a stop sign to be facing on both sides of Spring at Lee, which will cover, what does that go, north, south? Or wha- whatever it, the, the direction is on both sides. Um, we did go up there, paint lines for speed, but it's, you know, where we're sitting at, it's not, you know, uh, the, there's a lot of people to walk in that area. There's kids that play out in the yards, you know, stereotypical, uh, stuff to, uh, for safety and that. And this is just an idea. The other, uh, uh, the other idea that was brought to my attention is putting in speed bumps, but that's a, another discussion, and, uh, I don't even know if we could.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, so that's where I, that's my thoughts on.
Speed bumps can be problematic when you're plowing roads for one. For two, uh, there are plastic speed bumps, yeah, you can apply, you can install and remove, but that, that's gonna make it do.
And, and that's, and what that's gonna be is that's gonna be more of a burden on the street departments or any stretch as it is.
Exactly.
So, um, I, I think maybe this, maybe putting stop signs up there, uh, might be.
I think that's a great idea. Does anybody have any?
No, I mean, I think this is probably a way to start slowing down traffic because we're getting, I'm getting phone calls for Grand Boulevard where folks are flying down the hill going past the fireman's club. I don't, I don't know about maybe implementing stop signs over there too.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, oh, whenever I was on the road, I remember sitting, I used to sit up on the one street there.
Yeah, that's why.
And people argue, I wasn't going, yeah, you, you know, you were, cause if you're coming downhill, and that's.
Especially when they hit that bend.
Yeah. Uh, that's another, and then that's what I, I would like to see if we can get, obviously grant funding, more grant funding, um, those radar speed signs. Cause sometimes people are driving down and, you know, I, I've done this, going down the hill in West Newton. Oh, I'm, I'm doing X amount.
Yeah.
You know, you know, sometimes you're just cruising along, you, that you might be able to, like if flashes at you, you've been through communities that have these, like, and have them where they're solar powered, and also you can, you can move them. So you have a prob- a problem area, say Grand Boulevard, it slows down traffic. Now you have Leeds.
Yep.
Long as you don't have a contingency, just trying to see how big a number they can make.
Yeah, and also there's ones that do a traffic count, to see what kind, what are traffic's like.
Right.
Uh, de- depending on how, uh, in-depth you want to go, it's gonna go, also depending on how much money it's gonna be too.
My question is though, felt like Grand Boulevard, would that be a safety issue? We would let's say implement stop signs over there too?
I don't know, you could.
Like where that, your street where you were talking about where you're parking, you're coming down around the bend, you put a stop sign on Grand there.
Uh, and that's probably gonna be more of a, but like, it's gonna be like the, uh, the stop sign on Third Street.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That just, yeah, at one time, that didn't make sense, but it's, you know, it, uh, the one on Third Street's just one residence.
Yeah.
You know, a, a stop sign in the middle of the, uh, roadway.
With no intersection would be funny.
Yeah. So I, and I don't know if we.
Cause that portion of Grand, there, there is a intersection there that takes you up behind like into the cemetery.
Or another option maybe, and this is something that, uh, I don't know if Joey can answer this, but if we do like a safety corridor type thing like they do in other municipalities, which increases the fines, would you increase the fine from a, you know, a twenty-five dollar fine to a fifty dollar fine?
If we did that though, would your officers be willing to sit around there and?
Yeah.
Poke?
Yeah.
I, I think that'd be a good idea, do it and force them to find.
Yeah, it, I, I don't know if they can, you can do it, cause that's when you have to ask.
Cause Grand Boulevard is a mess.
We'll take a look.
Yeah.
We, we, we can discuss that, we can discuss that with our magistrate too.
Yeah. Um, I think that's fucked up. Um.
Thank you.
The other, the other thing, you want me to talk about that today?
Sure, go for it. Go for it.
Can we talk about it now?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Good thing I brought this up here. I'll just go over here.
That corridor's a good idea too.
You're all crooked.
That bad thing, Menneson's crooked.
All right. Um, this past Tuesday, uh, if, what again, but, all right. This past Tuesday, I went to a chief of police meeting out in, uh, Greensburg, where all Westmoreland County chiefs sit around and they talk about, uh, things going on in the world and, well, what involves us. Uh, there was a gentleman there who was a retired New Kensington officer, who was a coordinator for IUP, the Police Academy for a few years. He is now spearheading a officer and first responder wellness program. Uh, I, and that's for mental health, for, l- long and short, mental health for police and first responders. I expressed my interest in it, uh, to him to help. Uh, it could go from anything from being, you know, uh, a peer to someone or, uh, being on their committee to even also, uh, what, this is what, where I need council's, uh, uh, viewpoint or, uh, blessing to do. Uh, in the email I received today after my interest, he wanted to know if the, uh, Menneson Police Department would like to sponsor, meaning apply for grants, which he will write to grants, we'll just have to do, it's our name, but it has to come through us for the grants. So, uh, this is where it leads me to you guys. Uh, for the officer and first responder wellness program to be a host agency for twenty twenty-six for the, uh, cops law enforcement, mental and wel- mental health and wellness act program. I don't know how much it is. The grant doesn't open till next year, but we want to get ahead of it, and it, it's gonna be no cost to the city, no cost to our taxpayers, no cost to anything. Um, the only thing, if there is grants that are, there's, there's gonna be people in charge of the, uh, uh, finances, the, 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 the whole thing. It, it's, it may have to be filtered through us, but if it is, I think that's something where we might have to set up a, another bank account or another account because the problems that I'm not really seeing, but I am seeing with the PCCD grant that I received, it went into our grant fund. What's, with our grant fund is where all our drug seizure money went. So that drug seizure money, now I'm getting a little bit off topic here, but I'm trying to touch on base here. That drug seizure money, that is audited yearly by the feds. When we have the other money coming in there, it, it makes sense in the long run, but it's just more of a headache. That's where, if it gets to that point, if we are awarded this grant, we would probably have to just set up a sub-account for it. Uh, but that's it, uh, I ha- it's, I, I have some documentation here about the, it's a resource guide for the Community Policing Advancement Program. For this, uh, yeah, the, it, it, the long and short of it is, there is more police officers killed by their own hands than they are in the line of duty lately. Knock on wood, we don't have that problem here. I don't want that problem here. This is how I want to solve that problem. Not only for police, for EMS, for fire, and appear to go to whenever you're going through something where you're a big burly policeman, big burly fireman, and you don't want to come and show weakness. Well, if you talk to a peer from someone outside the county who don't really know you, but knows what you've been through, might be a little bit different than, you know, um, sitting at home and drinking on a, and sipping on a bottle all day. Um, that's where I want to go, and I want to, if we can be a staple in this, this may be, you know, give a shine more light onto Menneson and how we're evolving with the times.
Let me, uh, just make sure I fully understand some of this thing. First off, it doesn't cost us anything to make the application.
No.
We'll have people to administer that.
Yes.
That application and, and the way that goes. And yet we reap the benefit. We're gonna have a center someplace, maybe it's the school system if it's the right time of year, or some, some big venue where people from all over the county or all over.
All over the county. As far as I know, it's a county wide.
Well, people from Washington and Allegheny are, are being allowed to come in, is it strictly related to the county?
I don't know that. That's a good thing, but that's a good question asked, but we are, we could, as I understand it, we could tailor to how we want to do it i- in a sense. Like if we are gonna have a, a day of a seminar or a conference, you know, if it's, summertime, you prime for the, 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 the school system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, maybe we can invite other people down and say, hey, this is what we do, this is the service we offer, and if you want to do this, you could do, here you go.
So during this presentation, you're gonna have people that, that address these kinds of issues, make presentations on it and so forth, offers resources for, for mental health and within the, the first responder.
First respond, cause first responders deal with mental health, uh, one out of two calls that we deal with are, are mental health.
Right.
We deal with mental health of the public.
Right.
First responders don't know how to handle mental health themselves.
Right.
So this is where our.
Beyond the upside of this, it gives us a lot of recognition as being a progressive or police department organization.
Yes.
Is that helping any other way? I mean, that's always a good thing, I would say.
It, it, it may show that, hey, this is a, a department that cares. And that may help with.
Hiring.
Hiring? I don't know, it, it.
So, so what are the downsides to this?
I don't see any downsides.
That's remarkable.
Yeah. So, again, I've talked to, you know, I talked to you this morning about it. I talked to my secretary, I talked to my officers, talked to, uh, my better half, I talked, you know, a few other people about this, just trying to, because it's a shiny object and I want to see if there is anything that I'm missing.
So from a council perspective, will we have to put together a resolution or something along those lines to, to back such a, a program? Or what, what would be your suggestion?
He's looking at you.
Looking at me?
I'm looking at you.
He has the information.
But you're the, you're our solicitor.
I'm assuming there's something.
Yeah. Oh, I could probably dig something up, but I just want to bring it to council's attention because, uh, obviously you can't vote on it today, or anything along those lines, and it's still not far along the way down the road, but I just want to, before I waste time or go any further, I want the blessing of everyone here.
Any grant application will have to be some form of res- resolution.
Yeah. Speaking of grant res- uh, uh, grants, while I have the floor. Uh, the Westmoreland, uh, Drug and Alcohol, Westmoreland County Drug and Alcohol Commission. Westmoreland County Drug and Alcohol Commission, they have a micro grant out for three thousand dollars for the opioid. Uh, it's not the opioid abatement, it's the, it's like an opioid mi- uh, micro grants that they offer. Uh, anyone dealing with, had to deal with opioids or alcohol or anything like that. Uh, I don't know what I'm going to apply for, but it's a three thousand dollar grant, and it's for equipment, I don't even know yet, but. Um, I could probably. I could probably let you know in two weeks.
Thank you.
So, I just wanna tell you about that too.
Perfect.
While you're up here chief, how's the uh SWAT program?
The SWAT program is going decent, um, an officer applied, uh, Officer Naylor, uh, applied for it, he was the only one that applied for it from our department. He had his physical agility test today, and his qualifications, he passed.
Oh, awesome.
He has the interview process to go, and, um, I don't see any snags on that end.
I wish him the best of luck, that's awesome, that's good to see someone taking advantage of it.
Yeah, and um, he's a young kid, he wants to, he, he wants to get involved, so. Alright.
Thank you chief.
Thank you.
You're the best.
The next thing on my list is, uh, once again, the same properties we talked about earlier, so I'm gonna skip that, we've, we've we've already talked about that. So with that, let's pay some bills and see if we can wrap the day up here. Like to make a motion to pay the following invoice from the general fund in the amount of eighty thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment A, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. Motion to pay the following invoice from the parks fund in the amount of fifty-five thousand, forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment B, could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yeah, aye. Motion to pay the following invoice from the line usage fund in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment C, could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion to pay the following invoice from the grant fund in the amount of five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D, could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion to pay the following invoice from Liquid Fuels Fund in the amount of twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment E, could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion to pay the following invoices from the Recreation Fund in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment F, could I have a second please?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion to approve the transfer of seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-six cents from the General Fund to the Payroll Fund for payroll expenses for September eleventh payroll, could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion to apay, to approve payment requisition number thirty-five and certificate, and certificate in a total amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and seventy-four cents for phase three work performed by W E C inter- engineers in the amount of thirty-five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and eighty cents from August second, twenty twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And the work performed by Insight Pipe Contracting LLC for work performed from July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-four cents. For clarification, this comes out of the USDA loan, could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Um, I would like to make a suggestion, and, and I would like to, to talk to W E C before I do this. Um, Insight has done some work around town several weeks ago. An example of this work is on the corner of Fourth and Knox, and others on, on uh, McKee.
On McKee, yeah.
Um, they, they fixed the problem, but they haven't done restoration. They haven't, so, they've just put rough gravel on it. They hired another company to, to come in and do the restoration, and I don't even have a date when they're gonna do this. I would like to hold their feet to the fire and hold this checked until I have at least a date in which they're going to come and fix the problem.
I agree, cause I've been getting phone calls for folks that live up in that area of McKee that their gravel.
Cause problems with, with USDA or anything else, but this, this really disturbs me.
Yeah, cause I'm getting calls that the gravel that they laid down there and packed, it's starting to come up.
It is.
And it's, it's affecting the vehicles in that area.
And running it with the broken windows and dented cars and everything else, it's, it's a problem. I would suggest we, we go ahead and process this through the USDA, and then we, we force W E C to get some answers for us before we actually write the check. Can we do that? Okay, thank you. Could I have, we have a second, could, call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion to pay W E C Engineering the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars from the line usage fund and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars from the General Fund. Um, these are for various projects they've been working on, that, from the General Fund, well, could I have a second?
Second.
So, uh, the reason why this is coming from different funds is that we've had lots of projects that, that uh, we're not in line use. Any other questions? Call the pro- call the roll.
Uh, we have a second.
Yeah, we have a second.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. That includes the bill page, so I'm gonna turn it over to Karen for discussion of Lois's Streets and Parks, if you have anything for that? And then John, do you have anything that you'd like to discuss?
Oh, thank you honorable mayor, members of council, administrative staff, citizens of Mineson. Uh, just a few things, uh, that came up to my attention. One, uh, I've been getting messages about asking what our plans were for the tennis courts up at City Park. If we plan on restoring them, demolishing them, I just didn't have the answers to it, because it's been sitting there for a while. I think the, the uh, the clean soil's still there too, right, for some of our demos? So I wasn't sure what we, our plans were for the tennis courts, or we had any.
To be real honest with you, I'd really appreciate it if we could get ahold of those people that are interested in doing something and getting them involved in deciding what we need to do with it.
Okay.
Cause as long as I don't see anybody, any interest in it, I don't have any interest. But if there's interest in it, I would like to.
Sounds good to me, uh, I'll forward their information and see.
I don't know who you talked to, but I'd say over a year ago, somebody gave me a whole list of people in that area who were interested, and I just asked Mike this, earlier this week, that I'm looking to have a period of discussion about this, because it's been forever.
Why don't we call a meeting together with all these people and, and get some input from them?
Okay.
Well, I, I think we need an idea of whether it's worth repairing.
Only way you know that is if there's gonna be use, only, only if they, if only if it's worth repairing, only if we have users. If they have user groups that are gonna use it, then it becomes something that's a city benefit from.
Do you have those names?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, if we can add John.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I think that would be a very positive.
Yeah. And do that, yes.
Okay.
Then we can talk about the USDA aspects and, and other grant related things that we've looked at. It's just the interest, as the mayor said, in.
Of the app, there's no interest, but I mean, I'm just afraid the, the longer that it sits there, the less interest we're gonna be getting eventually.
So let's, let's act on it, let's, let's do something positive.
Um, the next thing that came to mind is, um, there is a property on Pennsylvania that is, bo- it's pretty much past the borderline of disheveled. It's pretty bad, and this person has not been responding to any mail, uh, citations, and I'm sure you know what I'm talking about, the property.
We, we.
Forty-one Pennsylvania?
Yes.
I mean, it's moving forward in a big way today.
So, okay, because other than that, I was suggesting that we could get the police to do a welfare check too.
We, we, we did that, we've had the discussion with her, we're moving forward. I will be talking to Rodney first thing in the morning, get him up there, and then he will clean that lot up and make it good, and I have her permission to do that.
Okay, but then going forward.
Then she's gonna have to maintain it from up forward.
I feel that's gonna be, that now it's gonna be our obligation all the time.
No, no, she made, we made it very clear, this will be a one-time thing.
But how has she been avoiding our citations still? I mean, I, I just feel that she's just a derelict to, to the area, I feel, I mean, it's good that we're, you.
I, I don't wanna get into a lot of the details in, in the public forum, but.
No, I completely agree, but I mean, I'll talk to you after the meeting then on this, but, thank you mayor. Something does need to be done up there.
Absolutely, and I think we did a lot today.
Um, what else? It's like a doctor's office, I'm gonna forget later. Oh, uh, and then Jordan probably got ahold of you Karen, right, about the.
He did, he's been on here.
Um, that's all I can think of, a boy Jordan, that's it, um, uh, other than that, I, I yield the floor mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Karen, would you like to talk about some of the things you've got going?
Sure, and I wanna refer back to what I had last meeting when I, um, the street crew, the parks crew had installed one of the soggy way stations, and um, Rodney sent me a really delightful photo that shows that some people, I guess, don't understand what those little bags are really for. So I don't know where we move forward with this, if we just shut that whole area down, or maybe give them, um, a few weeks, I, I don't know what. I don't know, I feel.
What about some, some discreet trail cams to see who's doing it?
And, and one area of real concern is people let their dogs in the baseball field.
Yeah.
Now, that is totally unacceptable, and you would think they would understand that, because there's children playing in there. I don't know how to address that unless we have trail cams, and we catch them, and they could be sighted.
They can definitely be confronted, I don't know how much you can sight them on a camera, but.
Well, their dog is loose.
If they're caught on a camera, right, and we know their information, are they, are we able to find them?
By, by leash laws, and we do have fines for letting your dog go, I don't know.
I'm all for it, it can be done.
I don't know, it's just very disheartening, that it's blatant, but.
Let's get together and do a little bit of rec- research on some trail cams, and see if we can find out a, a, a camera that we like and place that we can put them. Do a requisition on them and see what we can do.
Have any signage, do we?
We do.
The trail cams don't have audio.
Okay.
We have signs, I made a special sign.
No, I'm talking about the signs for video in the park, it's a, it's a public place, so I think they should know there's no sign, there's no expectation of privacy, so.
The sign could be a deterrent in and of itself, if there's.
Signs saying they're being recorded. I like that.
Okay, and I had been, um, contacted, there were, a resident interested in the tax forgiveness program, and I think I'd ask you mayor, and you said there was something on our website that you could go in and see the list of properties and whether or not these people had fulfilled their end of the bargain, whether within a year they had made any, any strides forward with fixing the properties up, I couldn't find it, I looked for it.
Well, that, that's something that's done in the code of enforcement, Lloyd would have that information.
There's a whole application package.
I saw that, but I didn't see a list of properties that, so that we could actually.
We're not a realtor, we're not gonna go find properties for people, it's up to them to find a piece of property.
No, no, I'm not asking for that, the ones that are already in the program.
There's only a very few of them that are in the program currently. And they should be scheduled by Lloyd for, for inspections and so forth periodically.
Okay, cause I guess there's real concern that they're getting these pro- these properties, and then they're not, not dealing with them. Which means, what's the whole purpose, if they wouldn't?
And there's some, there's some teeth in the contract that they signed in order to, to get that, and.
Have we ever pushed it and make sure that they do it, or, I mean?
Nobody has brought the, the issue up, whether or not people are complying with the program.
If you fi- have something that you think are not complying, talk to Lloyd and, and see what he says, if, if that's the case, then we can.
I have to, um, get some addresses and take a drive by. I don't know, I don't know, like Lloyd could drive by and tell whether or not they've made any progress or not. And again, um, Jordan had emailed me, he said that the lighting at the boat launch is not adequate, some of the lights work, some of them don't. Can we have somebody check that out and, I guess, go up the pole or turn it on, or whatever they need to do to find out whether this.
I believe those are West Penn lights, they're all streetlights, they're not stadium lights.
I haven't been down there a little while, but I couldn't remember if they're actually on a pole, or if they're just a metal rod with the light going up there. But if we knew the, if we knew the pool numbers, and if those pool numbers were then given to, like, Deneen, Deneen's still doing the numbers, right?
Yeah, she emails, uh, we email, or there is an online portal where she enters in all these light audiences, because I get some cc'd in the emails that once they receive it, and it, you know, it can go anywhere from, I get ten emails to thirty emails at a time. So they're being submitted.
Okay, so I need to go down there, it's dark, with a flashlight, and, and look at the poles and find that.
Can you ask the officers?
Yeah.
Yeah. Chief, can you ask the officers to take a look at the boat launch and, and, and the night crew and see if there, how many, which poles need lights repaired? Thank you.
Sorry chief.
Thank you.
It's a, I think it's still muddy down there too, so tell them to be careful.
As long as we're talking about boat launch, I, I forgot to put, say something to my things too. We received, uh, information from the US Army Corps of Engineers that they're going to be moving forward with, with repairing the boat launch, and they ask us to put together a estimate.
This, is this the, um, when you're saying the boat launch, you're talking about the, um, barges, right? They're stacked up?
No, I'm talking about the, the boat launch itself, where you launch the boats.
Yeah, okay.
Um, this estimate is something that we provide to them, and I don't know what their guidelines are for the maximum amount of money that they have available to us. But to me, it also includes the fishing dock. That too suffered when they dropped the, the line.
Yeah.
Dropped the, the river level, the fishing dock became beached, it needs to be relocated. Um, I think all they really asked for was for our, for W E C to put together an estimate, and they will move forward with this.
I think it's gonna be a city project.
It could be, and that would even be better, but even still.
Yeah.
If we put together an estimate, they approve it, they give us the money, that's fine.
So they cleared all the title issues, that was pretty clean, um, it's up to your engineers to design the project, put the estimates together, and there'll be contract documents.
Okay, so we need to make sure that we get that on the agenda so that that takes place.
And, and they asked in emails who the engineering firm would be.
W E C.
W E C.
Yeah, they, I, I saw an email today that they were in contact with W E C directly.
So, yeah, okay.
Perfect. That's a good thing, that's a long thing we've been talking about in council for a long time, and glad to see it finally moving forward.
Thank you mayor.
Have you seen any agreements with the Army Corps of Engineers?
No, others than the letters. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to have a motion to pay fifteen hundred dollars to Big Shoe as the sound contractor for the Music in the Park concert series.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Just to make sure everybody is aware, this comes out of the, the donation fund that we collected for this, uh, park, it has no tax dollars and associated. Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye.
I'd like to make motion to pay fifteen hundred dollars for Sky Pilot, to Sky Pilot as entertainment for the concert in the park series.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, this is, uh, the donation fund.
This is what, September twenty-sixth? Twenty-first, that's the last concert of the season, right?
This is the last one, and they, we've had some excellent concerts, just for everybody's information, this is your last chance to see a good concert for free.
That's next weekend, alright.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye.
And if you would like to take one of these flyers, if you belong to an organization or a club, and post it, I have, I have copies right here.
I'll take a few.
Um.
Just as a reminder too, as long as we're talking about entertainment type things and so forth. Uh, Friday, or Saturday, we're having the March for Jesus through, uh, downtown. And I invite anybody that's interested to join us, it'll be a good time. For whatever it's worth, I've invited the C M A to join us, Christian Motorcycle Association.
What is that again?
It's the March for Jesus.
Yeah, I, we voted on that, but I can't remember the date.
It's Saturday.
This Saturday.
It's Saturday, it starts at ten o'clock, nine?
Ten thirty, the people gather, eleven o'clock, the march starts.
Right, and it was really remarkable last year, we had people closing their shops and joining us in the march along the way, it's really a good thing. It was very, very encouraging. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, the dates for the trunk, trunk retreat event that's gonna be held at City Park is two to four on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, and followed by the City of Menneson's Trick or Treat, which will be held from six to eight on the same day, October twenty-fifth. Then the Menneson Halloween Holiday Parade will be held in conjunction with the City of Menneson Number One Fire Company and Ricky Dick of Castle Blood on Thursday, October thirtieth, beginning at six PM. Anybody have any questions about those?
I think that's wonderful, now we have some dates cast in concrete. Does anybody have any problem with those?
No, okay. We're not on, that's third, never mind, we're, you don't have council that day, never mind.
And we have another cleanup day scheduled for September twenty-seventh, nine to one.
September what, twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, that's what we discussed at the, I think, the last meeting.
Okay.
From nine to one at Sixth Street Park, and it's really important we have, that it's well-attended because we weren't able to do the cleanup in spring because every day we picked, it rained. So I'm, we're hoping that we have a big turnout of people to help clean up, and people can, again, we can meet at the park, and you could clean up an area that you think really needs to be cleaned up, and I have all the supplies we need.
I'd like to also remind all the citizens of Menneson that as summer winds down, we're into fall, September is still a good month. It's now time to clean up your yard, clean up, clean up things. If you can't come down and help us, clean up your own stuff. It's a good time to clean up around the, around your place.
Oh, and another thing, I remember decades ago, we would have a citywide cleanup, and it wasn't just picking up litter. You could put a couch out there or whatever you had. I, I had occasion to walk to work one day this week, and I was kinda surprised as I walked down, down, um, Prentice Boulevard, and I came across, uh, up there on, uh, Schoonmaker and Donner, between the houses, there was all kinda like stuff, and stuff on people's porches and everything that, I don't know, probably not designed to be on porches. Is that a possibility, are, is there a grants available to have one of those again in the, in the spring? Um, they was set for.
Well, two ways that that could go. One would be that we get our streets department to run their trucks around and, and pick up stuff from places. The other would be to get pro-waste, and pro-waste would be a fee that we'd have to, we'd have to contract to them for that.
Yeah, I don't know, but I wondered, would people participate? Would they actually take the time to pull all that stuff off their porches, between the houses, off of vacant lots, put it off with a car to be picked up? Because I, I, I think we need to clean up this town, we walked, when I walked through it, it should be clean, I shouldn't see stuff like that. I don't know, what does, does anybody have a thought on whether or not people would think it's valuable?
I think it'd be very valuable, but I would like to think that, uh, we need to promote that concept, add that to your flyer or whatever, and that we get together with the streets department and see if they can go around after the, the, the day and pick up all the stuff that evening.
Do we have to pay to have that dumped?
We have dumpsters around. I don't know if we have enough dumpsters, we may have to get some dumpsters.
So we'd have to check into a cost?
I don't know how many people would participate.
I don't know, we deserve that.
And, and that's the reason why I would say that it might be worthwhile to, uh, to, to run a test and see how much we got and let our streets department pick it up. We can arrange for, for a way to dispose of it, depending on how much we get.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
We have to talk about that.
Yeah, we need to talk it through, but.
Yeah. Oh, I have.
Thank you. Which case? It's now, uh, seven forty-four, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
No, we, we just do it.
Aye, aye, everybody, do that.
Aye, David.
Aye, David, we're done. Thank you.